Well, good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order. Today is November 12, 2019. We are starting the meeting at 7:16. I appreciate the school committee waiting for me. I really wanted to be here for the kids that are here today from the Welch School. And I'm out of breath because I ran here.[16.32][16.32](Laughter) Wow. All right. The meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris, and is being broadcast live on PAT. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to start off the meeting with a moment of silence if everybody could please stand. If I can catch my breath. Thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to our Superintendent Kara Mertag, who's going to be introducing some great students from the Welch School. Ms. Mertag?
It is a pleasure to introduce Moleskya's friends. As they say, the pledge of allegiance tonight, they're grade-three students at the Welch School. We thank Ms. Massa for being here tonight, Principal Massa. I'm going to introduce Kayiki Disusa, Mackenzie Jocelyn, Rayana Laurent, and Gianna Maldonado. Please come and join this mayor for the pledge of allegiance. I heard Rayana came here earlier this morning at 7:00 a.m., and Mr. Bucy allowed her to say the pledge of allegiance here at the Higgins Middle School this morning. So, but now we have our three other friends to join us tonight.
(Inaudible)
Mr. Mayor, can I take a picture? All right, ready? Awesome.
Ready, one, two, three.
Great picture, thank you. I would like to invite Principal Massa up to do the PBD gives. And I want to thank all the parents who've been here tonight as well. Thank you.
So much for having me tonight. It is my honor to be here to talk about the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Thank you. I won't cough on this one, I promise.[189.52][189.52](Laughter) I won't touch it or anything. To talk about the November PBD gives that the Welch School has the opportunity to let the district know about. I'm not sure if people know something that happened over the summertime. One of our students was in a horrific accident over the summertime in Lawrence. Her older sibling passed away in the accident. Her mom and her stepdad were severely injured, still going through multiple surgeries after more and more, they're slowly recovering. And our student, Moleskya Rohina, has lost about 50 percent brain function, and she's in Spalding Rehab, working very, very hard. Mom sends us videos all the time, we're so proud of the efforts that she's making. So, we decided that our PBD gives this month was going to have some direct effect on, obviously, the students in our district. So, we partnered with MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and we partnered with them so that we could raise donations, so that we could donate in Moleskya's name, and also donate to the family. Things like Uber gift cards, because Mom's trying to get back and forth to Spalding Rehab. She obviously can't drive, she's still pretty injured as well. But she's there for Moleskya every single day, and she's one of her biggest champions, so we're super proud of her mom and all of the things that she's overcome already. And I wanted to specifically thank some of the students that came that introduced the pledge of allegiance tonight, because those are some of Moleskya's very close friends. And one of the things that Moleskya's mom talked to us about when she first came in at the beginning of the year was how she wanted to make sure that she acknowledged Moleskya's friends, because they've been trying to reach out to her all summer long. And it's pretty difficult to have these conversations with young kiddos, but the resilience of our staff and our students is amazing. We are selling bracelets in honor of Moleskya. They say MAD supports Moleskya, and on the other side it says Amigos de Moleskya. So, we're selling bracelets for $2 a bracelet. It was my intention to have bracelets for you, but unfortunately, they sold out that quickly. We've placed another order, so as soon as the order comes in, I will make sure that I can get everybody here a bracelet. And we have donation jugs across the district as well for anybody who would like to make a donation in Moleskya's name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Massa. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ready to go back to the agenda?
I'm so sorry, but Rayana just showed up.
Yay![370.12][370.12](Laughter)
Rayana got her A's at a.m.s and p.m.s mixed up, and Rayana this morning came to the middle school, and Mr. Bucy allowed her to say the pledge of allegiance, which will be given to all of the members.
Oh, that's great.
But Rayana is Moleskya's best friend.
Yeah, should we do the...
Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, let's do the pledge of allegiance again. Let's do it.
Good idea. And I wasn't last. Good idea. Let's go.
This might be a first, but this is good.
Turn it this way? Ready? Like this, just like this? Perfect.
(Inaudible)
Hold on, hold on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Great job. So cute.
All right, we'll go back to the agenda and go to approval of minutes. We do have minutes from the regular school committee meeting of October 22, 2019.
Motion received and approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. You've heard the motion for approval of said minutes, seconded by Mr. Our Notice. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Our next item, approval of bills, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 4333, dated November 12, 2019, in the amount of $6,125,024, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion for approval of warrant A, number 4333, seconded by, or motion made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 4335, dated November 12, 2019, in the amount of $2,259,024, subject to audit.
Second.
Great, you've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant B, number 4335, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
There's no objection. I wanted to go out of order and go to new business, number one, the Emerson Park bus routes. Mr. Huckman or any committee member, any objection?
Thank you.
We'll turn it over, we'll go to that item, item 91, under new business. Mr. Huckman, I'll turn it to you.
Yeah, I think Ms. Corners is here from our leader at the Transportation Department. Good evening, thank you for joining us tonight, through the mayor to you. It seems that the bus route has changed. I think it's primarily with the Higgins School buses in the Emerson Park neighborhood. Up until about a year and a half or two years ago, I think the buses would primarily, from the west side of town, come up Thorne Dyke, go to the middle school, let the students off, and then return coming through Ellsworth Road, and then leaving to go west through Columbus Road. Okay. And then, I think the east side, well, the south side goes up Little's Lane, or the east side goes up Perkins to Lowell and where. So, I'm only talking about the buses that go west of Higgins. A year and a half or so ago, that pattern changed to the buses coming up Lowell and then up Emerson Street, going to the Higgins, and then returning and going down Emerson Street. So, what's happening is there's been a lot of complaints. I live in the neighborhood, there's been a lot of complaints in the neighborhood about why the bus route has changed, and that this one street, and it's not a long street, it's, I don't know, a couple thousand yards maybe, is getting the buses coming up and going back, whereas in the past, there was one street, Thorne Dyke, that got the buses coming up, and then a different street, Columbus, with the buses going back. So, I don't know why that changed. So, the first question I have through the mayor or the Chair to you is, was there a reason for this change in traffic patterns?
As far as using Emerson Street instead of King Street or Perkins Street, we've had a lot of construction there. We have 11 buses total going west.
Okay.
So, as far as them just going down King Street, they're not going to make the light. Making that left-hand turn now, going west, you know, towards West Peabody on Lowell Street, because they've added an extra lane for people to take the left on Endicott, it's very difficult making that turn. So, not all of them do use Emerson, they're probably half and half. So, when the people get out of King Street, they'll stop and honestly let the people out of Emerson out, because it's just, the light on King Street is just very short.
Yeah.
And they're already running, like, minute to minute to the elementary schools, and now you're bringing on the holiday traffic with all those people going by the malls, and now the winter months obviously are upon us. So, being with that, you know, they're going to be really late getting to the other elementary schools.
Thank you. So, again, through the mayor to you, nothing that I'm saying tonight is a criticism of you or the bus drivers whatsoever, so please don't take it that way. I'm just trying to figure out how we relieve the residents of Emerson Street of the traffic going both ways, because it seems to be something that's concerning to them as I'm getting phone calls. And I understand that the, you know, some of their concerns that they raise is at the bottom of Emerson Street is a pretty steep drop-off going to Lowell, and there's concern about a bus, you know, stopping when inclement weather comes and things along those lines, whereas Thorne Dyke and Columbus are flat all the way through. There are cars parked on, even though it's a two-way street, Emerson's a two-way street where Thorne Dyke and Columbus are one-way streets, so there's cars parked on both sides of Emerson, making it as narrow, if not narrower, than Thorne Dyke and Columbus, where there's only cars parked on one side of the street. I understand the concern about King Street with that added lane, but I think it's the traffic light that is really the concern. And I understand that the time for the buses is constrained, and bus drivers need to pick students up and get them out of the street and into the bus and into school in a timely fashion. But it sounds to me like, and I'll say respectfully to everybody involved, because I'm really not trying to do anything other than to relieve the Emerson residents of the buses going up and back both ways, and it's more, I don't think it's, I live right there, I live right at the head of Emerson and Ellsworth Road, and I see, I don't see any buses going down King Street, I don't see any buses continuing to go up Columbus Road. I see all the buses going up Emerson, and that's just my observation, again, not a criticism. If the problem is with the lighting on King Street and the length of that light, I think we might need to look at changing that, because that's, you know, the commercial streets on, in that neighborhood are Perkins, which doesn't have a light at the end of it, and I've tried to make that left turn myself, and we all have, and it's very difficult, and we certainly, you know, shouldn't expect the bus drivers to be able to navigate that turn and maintain a schedule, because it's hit or miss, depending on traffic, you know, and sometimes traffic backs up from the square through that point, and you can't navigate a regular-sized motor vehicle, let alone a full-size school bus. But there is a light at King Street, and there's a light there for a reason. And I think one of the reasons for that light is so that school buses can navigate that turn. And I understand also that that added left-turn lane going east further tightens that radius for the bus driver to make that turn safely and efficiently. But it sounds, again, to me like it's an issue that we need to maybe address in terms of where the stop line is on Lowell Street. Maybe it should be pushed back 20 feet from the intersection of King and Endicott. It should be 20 feet or 30 feet or 40 feet west of where it is, and that traffic light, that traffic signal, may need to be timed differently, particularly, and maybe only, you know, maybe only during the hours of your bus routes. And I think that we have the sophistication and the capability of adjusting the signal, the light signal, to accommodate that, and then have relief for the residents of Emerson Street, as well as efficiencies and proper, safe passage for the buses with the drivers and the students that are in there. So, that's the reason I brought this up tonight. It's been something that's, festering is too strong of a word, but something that's kind of been bubbling, percolating in that neighborhood for some time, and it just seemed there had been some informal conversations where I thought that perhaps we would be able to remedy this without it coming to the full school committee. However, the, and I think that those conversations filtered down, and there's just, you know, we still see that pattern happening, and I just wanted to have you join us so that you are fully aware of it, if you weren't, and see if maybe we, as a city, are able to collaborate and work together to kind of resolve this. It seems like a pretty simple fix. You know, there's some moving parts and would require some cooperation from some folks, but it seems like a pretty easy fix. So, thank you for answering, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Those are some strong points and some good suggestions. I have also heard from some residents on Emerson as well. And, yeah, I know we made some changes some time ago, allowed for that left-hand turn onto Endicott Street to try to alleviate some of the traffic there.
And it's been beneficial, Mr. Mayor.
But, yeah, but you're right, I can see now that has caused an issue for the bus drivers to, I hadn't quite thought of that. So, I know right now the light sequencing is done, and I think we have enough sophistication now with our technology that I got to imagine that we'd be able to carve out time, you know, from, you know, two to three or something along those lines where we could maybe change the sequencing a bit. But that is handled by the fire alarm department, under the fire department. Certainly, Ms. Mertag mentioned getting Scott Richards, the captain, to assist us as well. I'm not sure the best step to take, but I think, yeah, I think this is something we need to have addressed. But it would be a combination of Captain Richards, it would be, and then bringing in the fire alarm installer, Joe DeSilva, to assist us, as well as, you know, maybe Bob LeBosier in terms of DPW, maybe with moving the lines back. But I do think that could be a real workable solution to this. I know there's been a lot of, unfortunately, the National Grid project in that area has gone on longer than we had hoped. And that is, I'm told now, they pushed the timing for completion of that project to early December. So, I know there's still going to be a little bit of traffic issues, even more so than usual, which that's a heavily trafficked area anyway, but because of that process, the progress of that National Grid project. So, yeah, let us, thank you for bringing this forward. Let's keep that on the agenda and maybe try to get some answers and try to get some assistance. Is that okay, Mr. Huckman?
Perfect, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corn, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to continued business. Have a number of items, looking to see if we have any updates. MSBA Higgins Project, Mrs. Dunn? Nope, you need your microphone.
I'll do a stand-up presentation here. Well, with the Higgins Project, we are still working towards the official closeout of the entire project. There are a few different, a few more steps to go through, and we are on track and on schedule to complete those, so it is proceeding as it should.
Great. Thank you. Any fiscal year 2020 budget updates that, Mrs. Dunn, I'll turn it to you?
Actually, it is something that I would like to bring to our next meeting. One of the, one of the really interesting workshops that I attended at the MAS C conference was about transparency with the budget, and some of the different steps that can be utilized for budget planning and the budget process itself. So, I'd like to bring that to the next meeting and present it to everyone and see if some of those helpful suggestions might be very good for us to use. So, if we could keep it still on our agenda, I will bring that at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay, next item under continued business, number three, is Welch School feasibility appropriation. Anything to report, Mrs. Dunn?
Yes, this is great news. At the last meeting, the schedule had not yet come out from MSBA, but I'm very happy to report that PBD was invited to attend the October 30 meeting, at which time we were moved forward in the MSBA process with the Welch School project. And we are now in the module where we will begin selecting our owner's project manager, the designer, which is your architect, and begin the groundwork for obtaining a feasibility study. We were really very, very fortunate to get into that meeting. Everyone worked very hard to turn in specific paperwork and qualifications and certifications to get us to that October meeting. And time is very precious in any of these projects, but we are moving very rapidly and very deliberately through this process to obtain the status of the feasibility study. So, we will be having some meetings over the next couple of months. We will be working on language to utilize when we have a selection committee to look at the qualifications that we want for the Welch School project. We're hopeful that we'll have a meeting of the full Welch School Building Committee within the next few weeks, and we're moving, things are moving into a new phase, and it's a very exciting one, a very, very definitive process.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Planet Aid, item number four in the continued business. Mr. Huckman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a presentation by Planet Aid, was it earlier in the fall? I think, yeah, it seems like a long time ago, but it was earlier in the fall, where they, they are an organization that has collection vessels for clothing and other textiles that are discarded. The reason, and they presented to us, but the reason that I'm bringing this up tonight is that we, as a community, have benefited from Planet Aid insofar as they've donated, I think, all of the backpacks that they receive in this area, not just in Peabody, because they do have some boxes already in Peabody, to No Child Goes Hungry in Peabody. And the gentleman who spearheaded that and contacted us to make that donation is also a PBD resident. And during their presentation earlier this year, they are seeking to put collection boxes at our schools and replace the current provider that we utilize. And they assured us that they would mimic the benefit that the PTOs receive in terms of the contribution or the portion of the funds that are generated through the collection and the sale of those textiles. So, what I'm asking the committee to do is to take Planet Aid up on their proposition and allow them to put collection vessels at each of the schools, replacing the current provider. And the reason I'm making this request is because, first of all, they're a 501(c)(3), they're a nonprofit entity, whereas the current provider is a full-for-profit entity. Planet Aid has a history of donating to programs that benefit students in the city beyond PTO donations, namely, No Child Goes Hungry in Peabody. In addition to that, Planet Aid has a history throughout their business model of donating to local charities, whether that be youth sports organizations or other local charitable endeavors. So, what I'd like to see is us take a vote on replacing the company that collects the textiles at the 10 schools, I think there's a collection box at the high school as well, to, from what it currently is, to Planet Aid. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. We have a second for discussion. Thank you, Mr. Miko. Seconded the motion for discussion, Mrs. Carpenter, then Mr. Miko.
Thank you. In regard to the presentation for Planet Aid, I was not here. I apologize, so I missed that. I certainly would never want to turn away any type of volunteer for any type of service that we're going to get. I heard you say that they don't, do they donate backpacks? Okay.
Yes.
Through the Chair, Mr. Huckman, how exactly would they, because currently, the Bay State Textiles, all of that money goes directly, however much the school of the property that it's on, all of that by weight, money goes directly to the PTOs. How would Planet Aid handle that situation so that our PTOs are not losing out on what's just about for this year, almost over $5,000?
During the presentation that they, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
Through you to Ms. Carpenter. The presentation made by Planet Aid was they would mimic identically what Bay State Textiles provides to the PTOs in terms of the formula by which they're paid. So, as long as the same wage is collected, the same allocation would be made.
So, they're going to weigh them exactly the same way and give us the same weight cost?
I think Planet, again, through you.
Yeah, please.
I'm sorry, through you. I think, I don't think we have any contractual relationship with Bay State Textiles at this point. I think we might have at one point, but I don't think we do anymore. I think Planet Aid would be willing to enter into a written document that provides for the same funding formula based on weight to the PTOs of each school that Bay State Textiles is currently providing.
Okay. So, just a couple of points on that. So, one, I would want to see, do we still have a contract with them? What was it? Are we in any type of contract with Bay State Textiles? Entering into a contract with Planet Aid, I would want to review, you know, the same issues in regards to the plowing or any damage or anything like that. And does that contract involve all of the backpacks going directly to No Child Goes Hungry? Will they sort through all of those specific ones? So, I just have some questions before I'm prepared to vote.
Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Miko?
Through the Chair to Mr. Huckman. Actually, to the committee, because I'm really not sure about Bay State Textiles, because how long have Bay State Textiles been around? Maybe to Ms. Mertag on this one.
A long time. I was a principal at the Carroll when it began, so over 10 years.
Probably like six?
I would say 10.
10?
It was definitely when I was mayor, because they, we met Bay State Textiles at the Green Peabody event, that was at the Brown School. So, I want to say it's been... So I want to say it's been six, seven years. Maybe.
With that said, I agree with Ms. Carpenter that we should seek to see if we have a contract with them. And if we do, whether or not we would be breaking that contract. And then obviously take a look at what Planet Aid has and maybe have a side-by-side comparison on what's best for us overall. What has Bay State Textiles given us now and what could Planet Aid give us in the future? So maybe we have a side, if we can get a side-to-side comparison and then maybe table this for the next meeting or a couple of meetings down the road and make a decision from there.
I don't think we have a contract with them, but I guess it's something that we need to double-check. But I don't think we do.
And my concern is if we don't have a contract, well, you know, they have bins at every school. Are they going to come and pick them up? Or, you know, that's something we have to, you know, think about. If those bins have been sitting there for six to 10 years or however long it is, who's responsible for those bins?
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mrs. Dunn?
I'll be honest, I didn't realize this was going to be to replace Bay State Textile. I had the impression that it was going to be coexisting. Bay State Textile, to best of my knowledge, has been a wonderful partnership with the schools. The PTOs get a check, as far as I know, it's on a monthly basis. And they have sent thousands of dollars back to the community in addition to keeping the textiles out of the trash flow, which would have increased the tipping fees for the city at the dump. But they've been very good to work with, they've been very responsive. And I think that if we're going to choose between the two, that we should at least give Bay State Textile the chance to speak on this issue as well. They've been there through a lot of different things, and yes, they have partnered with Green PBD. And as a member of the Green PBD Committee, I will tell you, I did bring this up at our most recent meeting, just to ask them what they thought of having Planet Aid. They spoke overwhelmingly in favor of Bay State Textiles because that's been a partner with Green PBD, with the Green Fest. And actually, it came up during a discussion of expanding the coordination with Bay State Textiles in the city. So the membership there was very, very concerned as well and did ask me to just express that at our meeting during the discussion. And at that time, it was, I brought it forward, saying that, you know, it looked like it was going to be a, you know, you'd have both on the property. So I would like to hear some more information, and I would also like to check in with Bay State Textile because they, they've been with us through a lot of different things. I know that they've been very, very responsive when schools have contacted them. If suddenly there was a big overflow of clothing, they've come right out within 24 hours to pick up any overflow. If someone, you know, really cleaned house and brought a lot of bags. And they've been very good to the PTOs. And I, I just, I hate to see it change when it's been a good relationship and because, as I say, Green PBD wanted to kind of expand that as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Olympio?
Through the chair, and I agree with Ms. Dunn. I would be more comfortable with giving Bay State Textiles a professional courtesy, maybe to come, you know, before us and see, you know, really, is there any other additional things that, you know, they could help us out with? We've had a long-term relationship with them, and I'm just a little uncomfortable just kind of cutting them off at the knees on a vote like that. So I would, I would think about maybe, you know, certainly having them come before us and, you know, just maybe enlighten all of us again on some of the things they're involved with and what they do. And I think that'll give us all a good comparison of the two and we could probably make a more informed decision from there.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. I'm not looking to necessarily directly hurt Bay State Textiles. I'm not saying that they haven't been a good partner with PBD Public Schools and the PTOs. I think that the implication that Planet Aid wouldn't be as good of a partner is something that I really don't want to address tonight. But having both Bay State Textiles and Planet Aid sit here and make a presentation to us is certainly fine. I don't have a problem with that at all. I just brought it up, I'm going to assume that the benefits that the PTOs receive are going to be equal and that if that's the case and the quality of the services is the same and we get into the same, whether we have a contract now, I think at one point we did, where we talked about snow removal and things like that. Everything else being equal, if that's what it is, I'd rather support a local PBD resident who's involved with Planet Aid and someone that took the initiative to help out a local PBD initiative where I don't think, in the time that Bay State Textiles is here, we could ask around all the Little Leagues and softball leagues and basketball leagues and hockey leagues and soccer leagues. I don't think Bay State Textiles has gone beyond what they initially claimed that they were going to do, which was provide a certain percentage of the, of the money that they made off of the donations from presumably PBD residents back to PTOs. And that's what they agreed to do, and I think they've done that. I think Ms. Dunn's right. They've done that, but they haven't gone beyond what was there in, if you will, for allowing us to agree for them to put their boxes on school property. I mean, that was the reason that they did it. They didn't do it, I don't think they did it out of the generosity of their hearts. I think they did it because they had a business model that they can make money off of donations being made from PBD residents and give a little of that back to the PTOs. And I agree with Ms. Dunn that they're, that we also do benefit as a city within, in terms of our solid waste collection and the money that we're saving from the, those items not going into landfills. So if we can, through the mayor to Ms. Murtagh, maybe contact both entities and invite them to a meeting and see if they're willing to come and present to us, I will withdraw the motion and if we can put it on a future agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. That makes sense. On that, Mrs. Carpenter?
A question on that, yeah.
Yep.
Just through the chair to the business manager. Did you have any other figures for Bay State Textiles in regards to?
I'm familiar with this process. The only comment I was going to make is probably worthwhile to go back and look at the original agreement because as illogical as it sounds, there should be a fair and open competitive process. 30B gets involved when somebody wants to set up a bin to make donations to the school district that you, the town and the school are not able to give away properly without giving a fair and above-board assessment to anybody who's interested. So it may have been done in the first place, and so that may be part of why the existing agreement was in place. I'm just saying it's a possibility that would be worth looking into.
As a point of information, though, if I may, there was no process when this originally came before us. It was this one company that came before us, and we entered into an agreement which we thought was beneficial to everyone, and I still think is beneficial to everyone. I'm not, I'm not making any disparaging remarks about Bay State Textiles. I just think that there might be greater benefits that the city and its residents can receive through Planet Aid.
Great. Now, and that's very true. I do recall this very well. It was at Green Fest. Bay State Textiles was one of the presenters. They had their exhibit, went through their process. I and others that were there were extremely impressed, and that's kind of how it came to be. And that's been one of the successes of Green PBD is bringing that group in. So I don't think there was any 30B process at that time. So, no, I think that makes sense to invite them in, get all the, gather all the information, and then make the best decision we can. So I know Ms. Murtagh will work on that. She can get maybe from you, Mr. Hockman, the contact information. I know we have a contact person from Bay State. And then, yeah, bring them in and see where we go from there. We'll do that. All right, we do have one additional item or one final item on the Continued Business. Number five, open enrollment. Mrs. Dunn, any discussion on that topic?
I don't think so tonight, Mr. Mayor, but I think it is a conversation that we do need to have in the next, within the next couple of months on how to proceed with open enrollment. But I think right now, the status that we have is we're not accepting applications for next year at this time. And we will hear more from the superintendent and her staff about a proposed process for that. So I want you to keep it on there, but I don't think we need to discuss it for a couple, couple of months unless, unless there's something different, Ms. Murtagh.
No, I think we could maybe look at this after the new year.
That was my impression too, yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. We'll do that. Our next item, public participation. Is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? Have that opportunity now. Seeing no one, we will go to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Murtagh, turn it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our PBD gives, as we heard tonight, was well-received, supporting Melishka and her family. The second thing is our correspondence from the senior associate commissioner, Cliff Chuang. It is our partnership with Essex North Shore. We have seven students currently there for our craftsman and manufacturing. We have checked in. They're doing well at this time, but that's just the notification. Also in our packet, we have a field trip for performing arts to Allentown in Philadelphia from April 30th to May 3rd, 2020. With your approval, we will be able to send them off.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great. You've heard the motion for approval by Mr. Anotis, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
I'm staying.
Yes.
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 Our next field trip is for the JROTC to, what's it? Air National Guard Base in North Kingston, Rhode Island, from December 10th to the 11th, 2019. With your approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion to approve said field trip by Mr. Anotis, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
I'm staying.
Yes.
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 Mrs. Dunn?
I know it's a bit off-topic, but it's JROTC, and I'd like to commend the JROTC for their participation, for helping out yesterday at the Veterans Day ceremony at City Hall. The students there were excellent. They had a great color guard. They were very professional. They were very kind, speaking with many of the people at the ceremony afterward. They had some great conversations that I overheard with a 94-year-old veteran who spoke. And I have to tell you, they, they made me very proud. They did a wonderful job. It was nice to see them there.
Well said, Mrs. Dunn. You beat me to it. That was excellent, terrific ceremony. I did want to mention too, Mrs. Gore, every year does the Veterans Breakfast Friday before Veterans Day, and very well-attended. It was a great opportunity for our students to learn from veterans and their experiences. And it's a wonderful event that she does every year. Go back to you, Murtagh.
Thank you. That was on my list, so check, check. Thank you. But they did a wonderful job. They did a wonderful job. The Bay State Textiles monthly report is in there, in our packet tonight. And I also want to, a few things. Tomorrow is Kindness Day, so if we could, I'm saying it to the public, and I'm asking each student and staff member to do something kind for someone tomorrow. Tomorrow's National Kindness Day. Also, tomorrow's going to be very, very cold, so please dress accordingly as you stand at bus stops and things like that. So, and I also, through the mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Olympio to talk about the PBD Youth Football and cheering.
I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate PBD Youth Football this year. It's really remarkable what happened. PBD Youth Football, it encompasses grades one through eight, and there's four different levels. There's the Titans, the Crusaders, the Spartans, and the Gladiators, the oldest group. Well, the Titans won their championship game last week. And this Sunday in Beverly, at Hurd Stadium, they're starting, there's three games, 9:30, 11:30, and 1:30. You have the Crusaders, the Spartans, and the Gladiators all playing for the championship. And during the course of the regular season, PBD Youth Football did not lose a game. At all levels, they're undefeated. So it was pretty remarkable. Thank you to everybody involved, the youth program, the coaches, the cheerleaders, the parents, and the administration there. It's just, it's been a fun year and really remarkable. You have four levels of football and all went undefeated.
That's wonderful.
So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Murtagh.
Congratulations.
We do have one written communication. It's from the office of the city clerk, Tim Spanos, regarding the Welch School MSBA vote. And I think that was addressed by Mrs. Dunn. Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Start off with education. Mr. Hockman?
Nothing at this time.
Finance, Mrs. Carpenter?
Nothing at this time.
School safety, Mr. Olympio?
I have nothing to report.
Athletics and wellness, Mr. Hockman?
Nothing at this time.
Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Something to report.
Okay.
The Quality and Standards Subcommittee met this evening prior to our school improvement presentations in this meeting. And we had three items that we discussed, one of which I would like to bring to your attention and possibly have that presented tonight as a first reading. First item was about protecting student drivers and allowing them, if they're involved in an internship or an off-campus program, to have a method of getting permission to allow them to do that and be able to know who's driving to a program. And we have a form you've been handed. What the Subcommittee added to this form on the second page, there's a section called signatures, and there are some statements. There is one through four. The Subcommittee on Vote added number five. And it states, "If a student driver is allowed by law to transport others, said passengers must also have signed parental authorization for such transportation on record with the PBD Public Schools." We realize that the way the law is written, most students are not allowed to have passengers based on their status, but that there may be some students who are older and who have been driving long enough where a parent may agree to let their child travel with that other student. That won't be allowed without parental permission and having that on record. So we will add that line under the signature section as number five. And then at the bottom of that page, there's a large section, and we will put an additional signature section there for parents of passengers to sign as well. I will, I will let you know that if everyone is comfortable with that, I would say we could do that. This evening is a first reading. If people would prefer to hold off on that, we can bring it forward at the next meeting as a first reading and those, that language could be included. But we do have students in this situation right now, so the timing is a bit off.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Any comments or thoughts from the committee? Mrs. Carpenter?
Just a question through the chair. So currently, they just will ride without permission, if nothing else is happening.
If the superintendent could address that better than I could?
Okay.
I'm talking about CTE programming. I'm talking about clinicals at Leahy. Currently, they take buses. So if they were to take their car, we now have...
So they have the option to take the bus or their car to those?
They will, once we have...
They will. They do not currently now.
Currently, correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Miko?
Thank you. Through the chair to Ms. Dunn. Ms. Dunn, do you currently know what the law is for someone to have a passenger? How old do they have to be?
I do. I'll be honest, I'm past that stage. I'm past that stage. What time's over, but I'm looking over at the new driving.
So it's after they have their license for six months. Other than that, it's just siblings.
Okay. There we go.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be there soon enough, Mr. Miko.
Yeah, you two ahead.
I'm there.
It's not fun.
Are you there? Oh, boy. All right. Any other comments, questions, or thoughts on this topic?
Yeah.
Mr. Hockman?
I don't have any objection to this being the first reading, if no one else does.
Yeah, I'd like to move on this too. I know there's some students that have been affected.
I honestly imagine that the biggest concern of some of those students is, at the end of the day, if some of them are working, they can, they can go to work directly, and that may be one of the, one of the considerations as well.
Is it, is it possible to... Is it, is it possible to waive first reading and go to second reading? Or is that, is there, do we have a mechanism in place to do that?
No, I think we should do first reading. If we can do it tonight and then have the second one.
Okay. So we have a motion made for, does it need to be a motion at this point?
Yes. And I'll make a motion that the student driver permission form, as amended, be approved this evening for its first reading. It will also be included in our policy manual and I will get a citation for that, for the second reading. So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. And if you will note, just for the record, this form is really very detailed. It also requires teacher recommendations and input from the staff as to whether the student is allowed to do this. I thought that was a very good piece as well.
And thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for jumping on this item. I know this is, thank you for...
Thank the superintendent.
And Ms. Murtagh.
Yes.
Terrific.
The other two items that we discussed...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Dunn. Hold on one second.
Thank you. On this, through you to Ms. Dunn. Did you prepare this or was this prepared by staff at the high school?
No, it was prepared by, by our staff.
Our administration?
From other districts. We combined them.
Yeah, no, I just want to take note of it that, thank you for the detail and the clarity by which this form brings. It's phenomenal. It's very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Any other items? Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Yes, two items were discussed and will be brought to you at the next meeting. We will have our language all prepared for you. But the first one is going to be requiring anyone who is driving to or from our school by bicycle, that they have to conform to state law and that they have to wear a helmet while on our property. And we will be putting that together and also probably running it past the solicitor, city solicitor, make sure we have it. That will be with the goal of putting it not only in our handbook, but also in the policy manual as well. And then the other is concerning items of contraband, especially the vapes and joules and those things. There's been an issue where parents come to the school demanding the return of the property which has been confiscated. And we are going to write a policy and language for the handbook that explains that if you've brought illegal substances to our property, it will be confiscated, it will be turned over to the police, and no one's getting it back. We'll dress up the language a bit, but that's the gist of it.
I think that works.
I joke.
You got to tell all.
Yeah, we'll just, you know, put the brief one in there. So that's going to come at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, if we may, on that last, on that last item, could we also put that through the city solicitor?
We would, yes. We would. He'll dress it up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next Subcommittee, Parent and Student Advisory Boards, Mrs. Dunn?
I do need to apologize. I have not scheduled a parent advisory board meeting. And I want to have a member of the Safe Roots to School come and speak to the parent advisory board. And I did speak with the liaison and she's willing to come out and we just need to find a good date and time for that meeting. Hopefully, it's going to help a bit with many of the issues that we face with traffic at the schools. This started out with a group that helps with making sure that crosswalks are maintained and that students know how to behave on a crosswalk, et cetera, et cetera. But I spoke with the, the woman about the issue of the students riding their bicycles in a dangerous fashion and told her what had happened, that we had a very good result for a few days with the police intervention. And now it seems to have slid back. She said this is a problem everywhere, but she was also very aware of the project, the problem as well. She'd heard about it. And so she's going to come out and speak and I will actually probably make it so that everyone can attend. They have a curriculum that they will provide for us. She had very specific materials, which I have with me tonight. Throughout this presentation, I will be showing you different things from the MSC conference. But this was a middle school resource guide, Safe Roots to School Toolkit. And she will be able to address many of the issues, not just about crosswalks and traffic patterns, but they also do have a very good program about bicycle safety. And I thought that was very pertinent. So that will be for the next parent advisory board meeting, but I don't have a date yet. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
And then Student Advisory Board, coming back to you with all kinds of information on Student Advisory Board. We'll be, MASC will be offering a training for Student Advisory Board members in this area. And our students will be invited to it. They had an excellent presentation at the conference where many students in the local area were able to attend on Saturday. It was fascinating to hear the students. It was interesting to hear about the different ways things are done at the schools. And we're in good shape here, I will say that. And it was nice to hear. And we'll be moving forward to strengthen our Student Advisory Board. The Student Advisory Board is a legally required group and they have some very, very good direction going forward.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Miko, did you have a call?
Sure. Through the chair to Ms. Dunn. I just wanted to thank you for, for that and for your leadership over at the MASC representing us. I just want to thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Building and Ground Subcommittee, Mr. Miko?
Nothing to report at this time.
Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympia?
Yes. We are meeting at the Higgins tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. And we usually meet in the cafeteria.
Okay. Thank you. City Council and Legislative Delegation, Mr. Anotis?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. New business, we did, we did address number one. Number two, MASC, MASs Conference. Mrs. Dunn, turn it to you.
Thank you. I've tried to put little bits and pieces of what I learned in our agenda this evening. But I will tell you, it is always a pleasure to go. It's an honor to represent PBD. And it is incredibly, incredibly interesting to hear all of the things that are presented. They, they offer so many workshops and you're free to choose whichever one you want to go to. So I always try to make sure that it's things that I need, you know, for PBD. And now I'm wearing two hats and I try to find things that will help with Essex North Shore as well. And one of the biggest frustrations is they offer such great workshops and they always seem to be at the same time. So it's a real tough decision. But I did bring some things back tonight. And as you heard, I spoke with representative of safe schools. So going to work on that. Had a presentation. I was, I was actually honored to be chosen to moderate it. There's a program sponsored by Attorney General Mara Healy. And it is designed for middle school. It's a curriculum that is free, which is always a good word to use when you're looking at all of these things. And what they've done is they've got a private-public partnership between the Attorney General's Office, supported by the GE Foundation, and it's called Project Here. And what they discovered in dealing with the opioid problem is, of course, that education is prime to help with this, that the middle school age is a good age to get in there and try to educate students. But there isn't enough time in the day for staff to address that. Because teachers trying to work on a curriculum, there's so much information out there and you want to make sure that it's good information. So the Attorney General's Office has gone through and done that. They've pulled together all kinds of resources into this program with a suggested curriculum. And it's designed so that teachers can use some of it, all of it, just as a knowledge base for themselves when they're trying to speak with students. It's based on a cultural basis, which was very interesting to hear about, to try to explain how people come into school from a different culture and have different thoughts on different things. And when you have children coming from a background where there may be a drug culture, they're coming to school with a totally different base than some child who's never, ever been exposed to, to drugs in the home. And that's one of the issues that they see kind of peaking at the middle schools. So the presentation was excellent. They would love to come to Higgins. And Essex North Shore, the superintendent and the chairperson of the school committee happened to be at this presentation. And I knew that it was designed for middle school. But what we talked about there was making sure that this might be offered to the 17-member communities through encouragement of Essex North Shore, so that when the students who attend that high school come in, they will have a common basis of understanding, which would help at that level too. They also have had many people request a curriculum for the high school. And they don't have that yet. But many of the items that they have can be utilized on that stretch from eighth to ninth grade. And a lot of what they spoke about was what I've heard you working on as far as that bridge from eighth to ninth grade. So it might fit with the program. This is something I know that the superintendent and the staff need to look at before they ever even, you know, went into this, if, if that was a decision. But it was very good. They really do want to work with us. And again, it's a resource and it's free. Okay. Another item. Comcast provides high-speed internet for people who participate in the school lunch program for free and reduced lunch. And that's been an issue here in our district for people who don't have internet access because of the cost. For $9.95, people can get that program. So I'm going to, again, I'll be bringing everything over to the office tomorrow. But this, I thought, was something that we might be interested in, in, in just being able to put that out to the families in our district. If someone isn't able to access internet, I'll be honest, one day I saw a little girl sitting out in the parking lot out back. It was well after school. And I was out there looking at the fields, of course. And I got concerned. And I said, "Are you okay? Do you need a ride home? Is someone coming to get you?" She said, "No, this is the only place I can go to access the internet." She had her little Chromebook out there. And I thought, "Oh my gosh." So there are people that might need this program. First time I ever heard of it, first time most of the school committee members assembled at the, at the banquet had heard of it. And it sounded like a good program. So I'm going to bring that forward and maybe we can put that out to our families.
Great.
Another program, Minding Your Mind. This was Breaking the Silence through Education and it's Mental Health Education and Suicide Prevention Training. And again, this...
He came to the Welch the other day.
Okay, they did. And they came to the Welch. The woman was very, very enthusiastic. They came to the Welch to give this presentation to the Welch School families, I heard. And she was so appreciative of that. And it was, it sounded wonderful. So I picked this up because it sounds like something that we really could utilize at, at all levels. The staff was very knowledgeable, very kind. And again, I think it was free. See a theme there.
I like it.
And then this is a document that I'd like to be able to work with our Student Advisory Board on. It's student representatives on the school committee. And it gives them the guidelines. So with your permission, we'd like to come up. I'll take our Subcommittee up and meet with you, Dr. Lord, and your students and, you know, really help them to be as strong as possible for strong advocacy for students. It was fun to hear what students have done in other districts. And it was a really great presentation. And as I said, MASC is going to offer training, maybe within a month or so. So I can't thank you enough for sending me. It's, it charges your batteries up. I have more. I'll filter it in during the year. I thought of all of you. I have something for you, Mr. Olympia, for special education, some contacts that want to get together with you on special ed. Things for you, Mr. Anotis, for legislation and for transparency with the budget. That, that was a really great presentation on being able to show the community why these things are needed and why it's important to support education in our city. And to highlight how we're moving forward and how that results in benefits in many areas people never even think of. So it was tied in with legislation too. So I thought of you. So I was shopping for all of you, you know, pulling documents. I've got this huge bag filled. So keep me on the agenda. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I think I can speak for everyone here, Mrs. Dunn. We really appreciate you attending these, these conferences every year. You know, you bring a lot of helpful information to us. You do an outstanding job representing us as a school committee. And we're very fortunate to have you going to these events and going to these conferences. So thank you for doing this.
It really is my pleasure. I even went to an MSBA presentation. That was a good one. I've got tons of notes. We have to have a meeting. I've got tons of stuff to tell you.
We get tomorrow. I'm, we get tomorrow.
I don't know. I never heard back. Are we going to meet? Perfect. All right. I've got three notebooks in here for you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, again. Mr. Anotis?
Just one quick thing, separate from this. If we could, could we have our maintenance folks check out one of the, and I know this is, it's a street light, but I believe it's on our property at the Welch. When you enter into the Welch School, I believe it's on the left-hand side. We found out last week that it is out, so it is pretty dark at night. I want to say it's the left-hand side, but it's right when you turn into the Welch, kind of where it narrows a little bit. So whatever lamp post is there, there's no light at it. So we can get that corrected. That'd be great. I want to thank Council McGinn as well, bringing that to my attention.
And that street lamp was fabricated specifically by our, our in-house maintenance group when they put that light up because it was a very dangerous spot. And they, they worked very hard to, to create a light post that would match all the other ones on the property. So it, and it's, it's in a very critical spot.
Yeah, it's an important curve.
It really is.
Thank you, Mr. Anotis. We'll be on top of that. All right. Excellent. Next meeting is November 26th. Thanksgiving is the 28th. Next meeting, November 26th. Items for the agenda can be handled in the regular course of business. And a motion to adjourn, received by Mrs. Kopfner. Thank you, everyone.